Doing okay out there, Howard?
What's the over and under dinner tonight?
You're ready.
We, uh, I may actually get fed tonight.
I'm hoping to get dinner. It'll be the first night this week, so you know, to eat something. Not that I'm gonna ever starve to death, but I'm just saying.
You got enough on you to last you a week.
At least a week.
See if I got enough forms to make it through tonight. We had, I usually print out the, uh, the voting records before we begin. We had a few corrections and modifications. I ran out of forms. All right. I think we've got a quorum. Everybody's back. So we're going to begin with District Seven. As we've done with each district, I will go back over the items that have been sequestered by board members. At the completion, we will have a motion to accept staff recommendations for those items that have not been sequestered. So this is what I have on my list for District Seven. Seven zero zero one, seven zero zero two, seven zero zero three, seven zero zero four, seven zero zero five, seven zero zero eight, seven zero zero nine, seven zero one zero, seven zero one one, seven zero one two, seven zero one five, seven zero one six, seven zero one seven, seven zero one eight, seven zero one nine, seven zero zero, and seven zero two six. Ms. Halford.
We have moved to accept the recommendations from our county planning board staff for the log issues in District Seven, except for the sequestered items listed by our chairman.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Schweitzer, Ms. Halford, Mr. Schweitzer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move forward with the SIS District sequestered items, starting with, excuse me, Seventh District sequestered items, starting with seven zero zero one. And that was sequestered by Mr. Warren.
Sorry, guys, I'm just trying to get back to my notes here.
No problem, Mr. Warren. I've gotta get to my log. So seven zero zero one is eleven South Maryland Avenue. Albright's Mechanical Services was the petitioner. Current zoning is BLAS, BMAS, and DR five four five. Requested zoning is BMAS or BM. The staff's recommendation is BL with a very small portion of BLAS. That's a point oh one acre for BLAS.
My, my questions were more around what he could do with the property. Well, I understand he uses this as a, for service now. And has some, you know, automobiles parked on this property. So can he continue his service? Rog, as is, with the change in zoning?
Let, let me, let me speak to that a second, if I may.
Okay.
Uh, one of the, one of the petitioners had, who was objecting, uh, uh, it wasn't so much as, uh, what Mr., what Albright's is doing, it's kinda like how the equipment was being stored and, and the appearance of it. I, I looked at a number, picked the photos and so forth, and it just didn't seem like, hey, we, you know, it was a, it was a cleaned up, it was an organized, organized group of, 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 of items. He's a, he's a, an HVAC guy, Albright says. He's, he's a good guy. But, you know, when he stores equipment and so forth, um, whether it's used, stuff that needs to be recycled or, or junk or whatever, uh, it just needs to be squared away so that, uh, it, it presents a neat appearance. And that was the, that was really one of the big issues here, I think, that, that the petitioner had, had invoked.
And, and I have on my notes of looking through, we got the same thing, that, that property was a little trashy. So that's the only thing I had on my notes there.
It wasn't so much about Mr., about, about Albright's business and so forth. It was just, hey, can you, can you help? Can you clean up the area a little bit because it's a residence next door?
I agree.
So, so does Mr., well, let's just do this. Is there a requested zoning? Would you like to submit a motion, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with giving, I, I don't live there like, like, uh, Mr. Schweitzer does, so, and I wouldn't want to mess around my house either, but I, I'm fine with offering him the BLAS, BMAS, BM, for the property so he can operate his business. You know, I don't know how you cite him for, uh, you know, I'm sure there's a, a process to cite him for that. He should keep it clean. He should keep a business and...
So, so let me ask this question before you, because, um, wasn't quite a motion because he, he's not sure what he wants, particularly between the BMAS or BM. So let me ask the staff, that was a question at, can Mr. Albright do what he needs to do with BL? With your recommendation?
Hello, and thank you Chairman Phillips. Um, my name is Joe. I'm the Seventh District Planner. We have recommended BL. Our reason for the adjacent parcel to the existing, uh, workshop, um, for being BL is he was looking for storage, a storage facility and parking. The BL would allow for this on, um, the eastern portion of the, the issue. We also recommended changing the existing BMAS to BL, and I, I should, heard of Pete and Jeff on this because I think we may have done that in error, actually, and we should, probably should have retained the existing BMAS.
Comment from Jeff and Pete?
I, I guess my, my question still is, I mean, he's got BMAS right now. I mean, I'll just leave it BMAS, which is much higher zoning. I'm not gonna downzone the property, so. But the, he must have wanted this for some reason, so he can, can do, whatever he's trying to do on the property.
Storage and extra park. So presumably, he's looking to expand that onto the adjacent property on Hamburg Avenue. So the BL would provide. So we, and, and BL on the entire area. I'm just not sure if our recommendation, um, meant to change the existing BMAS or not, now that I have looked back at this. So on this.
I just, I just looked at the, one of the, the letters from the petitioner, and, uh, the, the staff recommendation matches, matches the, uh, what he was asking, what the petitioner was asking for. So I guess I'm saying that, you know, staff recommendation is what, is what has been requested here.
Okay, so, so when he filed this, let me, I wanna be clear. When he filed this issue, he really wasn't clear on what he wanted. But there's a subsequent letter, and I probably have it in my, my file as well. There's a subsequent letter where he clarifies what he wants for that parcel.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, to me, it's, it's, uh, it's clear on what he, what he's asking for.
Well, can you, I, I'll make that mo, I, I'm, I'm just trying to help the business guy out, so if you tell me that he should...
Well, and I think, I mean, the petitioner, I'm, I'm losing my screen here. I don't know what's going on, what's going on here. Come on.
Petitioner's the business owner, right?
No, I'm talking about the person who was, who was, uh, who made the petition about, uh, really against the business. Not so much against the business, but, you know, to say, hey, you know, we, we need, we need some, uh, we need some, uh, some efforts to, to improve the appearance of the area. Uh, and that was the person, that was the person who submitted the rezoning for seven zero zero one.
As I understand it, Rob, the
I may be wrong on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could jump in real quick. If you look at the, the log of issues, when the petitioner filed the issue, majority of his request was for BMAS or BM.
Correct.
So there's a little bit of unbalance of whether he wants the AS on the whole site or, uh, but it's clear he wants the BM.
Yeah.
BL is on the front, uh, when you go further north, and I think that's where the staff was dr- um, formulating its recommendation. It was taking the BL from the north face and putting it on all of it without the, without the AS. That would allow him to expand his parking and storage without the opportunity for turning the whole corner over for a potential gas station.
Okay, all right.
So that's where staff is coming from.
Doesn't that make sense to do the, just the BM and keeping the BLAS? How's everybody feel about that?
So
can I add, why, why wouldn't we leave the BMAS on the property that's already BMAS? And make the section up there just BL? That way we're not downzoning his property.
That makes, that makes sense. That makes sense.
I don't know how to split that up, guys.
It's the staff recommendation.
Nah, that's not the sta, that's not
The staff recommendation was to rezone the entire area to BL. And like I mentioned earlier, it was to BL.
The staff recommendation. Staff recommendation is to BL point eight zero, and then PLA, BLAS is point zero one, which is very
I think, I think that's just the, the little part, that must be like a parking lot or might be just a little sliver over there. That's a small amount.
All right, that is, yeah.
I, I think if you drew that line, and you made that, I can't, I'm hitting a screen that you can't see, but the whole section that, it's like a big football, we would have played with, the paper football part, uh, make that BL, and then leave the part that is AS, uh, with the dotted, or the line that goes down there, AS, so BLAS for that portion.
So, so if I'm understanding you, the parcel that is to the west, the almost rectangular parcel to the west would remain BMAS? Because that is what fronts, um, what road is that?
Maryland.
Maryland Avenue.
The area that fronts Maryland Avenue would remain
In line with what's next to it, too, so.
Would, yes, which is BLAS, and then the almost triangular parcel to the east, the northeast would be BL. Is that where we, are we all good with that?
Yeah, I, I would let you make that motion if you wanted, Mr. staffer.
Chair's not gonna make a motion, but
No, I, I didn't say, no, that's Mr. staffer.
And what is that motion?
What you just said.
Be, BM, BMAS, if you could highlight that, BMAS to the west, right, that would be BMAS, and the remaining parcel would be BL. That's Ms., Ms. Halford's motion.
Second.
Go along with it.
Okay, and that was, that was Mr. Schweitzer?
Yeah, that was me.
All right, you've heard the motion. Gosh, I'm ready. Okay, all in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries. I gotta make sure I'm writing this one, getting this one straight. So BMAS.
Point two four.
Is that area point two four? Does that equate to the point two four? Staff, tell me that.
Why don't you let us draw it? I think we know what you want. We'll, we'll cut it on the property line.
Yes, okay. And also, is that, um, one lot, is, is that lot six versus lot? Maybe we can do it that way.
That's lot six. Lot, looks like lot six is to be the BL, and I can't see the other one.
The residential house.
With the residential house, there you go.
Okay.
Lot six.
Yes. And that's lot?
Um, eleven.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask a point of personal privilege? I guess that's Robert's rules.
Yes, you may.
I said I couldn't remember why I sequestered one. I found my notes back. I hate to make us go back to six twenty-six. If the board wouldn't be against it, I would ask that maybe you consider my thoughts on it.
Okay, hold on a second. Let's get back to you. I don't mind doing it. That motion carries, that's seven zero zero one. Now, Mr. Perlo, just, just so that you know, that was a unanimous vote to accept staff's recommendation, but if you'd like to be heard on it, we will be glad to hear it.
Okay. Um, I apologize that I didn't have my notes where they were supposed to be. The petitioner did ask for MH. They are looking now. They're comfortable with MLIM. This is a coal-fired, um, you know, uh, electric plant that's being renovated and turned into a gas-fired. We'd all think that would be better for our environment, you would think. Um, but the gas-fired is not taking anywhere near the acreage that the coal fire took because of the storage of coal and, you know, that kind of thing. So they have, in their mind, a good, you know, fifty acres that, um, is just gonna sit there and not be used. They just feel like they can do some kind of industrial use with it, um, that's not part of the, um, the new gas-powered, um, electric plant, and wanted us to consider that rather than seeing something sitting there not being used. On its own peninsula, you know, away from everybody. There's no other, um, residential, you know, right abutting it. There is some, of course, across the water. I see that. You know, I think that, uh, getting them to spend the money that they're doing to turn it into a gas-fired plant, to give them some ability to develop and use the rest of the land as well would be reasonable. So I would make the motion that, um, we rezone it MLIM.
So you, uh, first, this is a motion to reconsider our decision on six zero two six.
That's correct. I'm sorry.
So we've got a motion to reconsider our decision on six zero two six by Mr. Perlo. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Thank you.
And that's Ms. Burzens? All right, Mr. Perlo, Ms. Burzens, motion to reconsider. All in favor on the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, so before we even get to the motion, it's just to reconsider, to reconsider and debate, six zero two six. Mr. Schweitzer?
Uh, ne- uh, we have, yes, to reconsider.
We're not deciding on the requested zoning. Just, are we going to reconsider that vote?
No.
No. Ms. Panero? Ms. Panero?
Yay, yes.
Mr. Hartman?
No.
Mr. Halupka?
No.
Halford?
I gotta pull it all out. I gotta look at it again, so I'll, I'll, I'll take a look.
Okay, Ms. Burzens? Ms. Wolfson?
No.
McGinnis? Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heino?
McGinnis is a no.
McGinnis is a no. Mr. Heino? Mr. Heino? Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Where's the vote?
Um, we're supposed to keep count. I'm not supposed to tell you, but it, it is six to, it is six to three.
Against?
Yes.
I'll abstain.
Okay. All right, at the moment, that motion, that motion fails. I asked Ms., Ms. Halford, would you want to vote on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say no.
Okay, and Ms. Burzens? Back to you.
I said yes.
You just say yes, okay. Uh, motion fails. I'll move on now. Okay. Okay. One second, guys. We're moving to seven zero zero one, seven zero zero two. And that was Mr. Perlo and Mr. Hurst, seven zero zero two. Seven zero zero two is the southeast at the intersection of Orville Road and Eastern Boulevard. It is currently zoned DR five four five. The request is for BM. Staff's recommendation is DR, we're keeping it at DR five four five. Mr. Lo, did you wanna go first, or you want Mr. Hurst to go first on this?
I, I can start if, uh, it's okay, Howard.
Okay.
My notes have this as, as a non-conforming use. It's, um, been used continuously for auto, um, engine work, or, I think, I have over sixty years. And th- these are one of those, those issues where there's a non-conforming use, where it's one of the primary reasons, in my view, to, to rezone, to try to, to bring the zoning up to, um, up to speed with what the actual use is. We don't wanna have non-conforming uses if we can avoid it. Uh, so this, this is one of those deals where it's not really gonna change anything. It's just gonna allow them to upgrade the property. As far as I know, there's, there's not any plans to, to, to really do anything other than maintenance and, and being able to, to, uh, do upgrades and giving them the request of BM zoning that will, will afford them the flexibility to maintain and upgrade their property as, as any other property ever would, uh, but for the fact that it's zoning, I guess.
All right, Mr. Perlo?
I mean, my impression is that the entrance comes in for this use off of Eastern Boulevard, and, um, you know, which is a major commercial zone. Um, you know, I don't have a problem, you know, with him using it for that, and I think that that's a reasonable use, so to give him the BM, you know, I think is reasonable.
Okay, Steph?
Hello, so on this one, the area surrounding it is all DR five five. This would put a spot stone of BM right off of Eastern Boulevard at that location. Um, we had a number of opposition letters written to, um, uh, planning staff for this issue, and given its current location and, um, um, within that neighborhood, we thought that keeping it DR five five was appropriate.
Is this a permitted non-conforming use?
It is a non-conforming use currently, um, and yes, I believe, I believe it is, and
As I understand, as I understand it, if he wants to do any improvements to the product, it's very challenging for him to do, even improve his property, uh, with the non-conforming use, so.
Right, or to get refinancing, that's the big issue.
Okay, so
Chairman, this is Pete. Again, from my understanding, it is a not, it's not a, a legal, uh, non-conforming use. It isn't, it is a non-permitted use at this point in time. It is not legally non-conforming.
Wow.
Trying to make it conforming to the new zoning, getting the zoning request.
How long has he been?
I'm familiar with that area. That, that's a residential area, and, um, you know, what's been going on there is probably, yeah, okay, I'm, there's somebody's trying to do some business there and so forth, but it's a residential area.
Hasn't he been doing it for sixty years?
It's a residential area.
Okay.
So, so, and I might offer that if he's been doing it for sixty years, he probably doesn't have another sixty years to do it. So if it gets upsown to BM, you won't know who's going to be using it next. So don't predicate it on the current use, predicate it on the future use.
Okay, all right.
I just hate to take somebody that's been operating a business and not allow them to do that. I just, I don't think that's right, so. I wish, I mean, it wasn't that way. I wish you could just, you know, operate, but I wouldn't want somebody to come take something that I've been doing for sixty years away from me, so. Those houses around him weren't there when he started doing this, probably.
I guess I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear on what's taking place here. Uh, has there been any complaints about what this gentleman is doing with this site?
There has. Um, we've had, um, it looks like four, four letters of opposition. There's just some, I know, the adjacent to the rezoning request, the writer stated that, um, uh, he's put a lot of effort into his property and that, um, there's been a lot of, the, um, that property in question um, has created a lot of, a lot of traffic in that area. The other concerns from letters have been about compatibility issues with the surrounding neighborhood, noise complaints. And, let's see, um, the area is concerned DR five five for a very long time. That, my understanding, that, uh, owner has had this property The smart thing that uh owner has had this property um since the sixties or before, um, but it's been zoned D R five five for many decades.
All right, so he's had the property, he's operated it as a business since the sixties. I got mixed reviews on this one, okay? Yep. So everybody, all of his neighbors have been there while he's operated this business.
Sure.
Okay, all right, well, is there a is is there a uh motion on the floor?
Who who brought it up? Who who was it, John, or was it?
Um, this was brought up by
Howard.
Howard and and John. Mr. Mr. Herbst, you want to offer a motion on this one?
Yeah, I'll move to uh rezone the property, point four two acres to uh B M.
Okay, B M, Mr. Herbst, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Perlow, okay. I have this question, once again, I still don't know how what he's doing with this property. So somebody's got to help me. What is he doing on this property?
He has an engine repair shop, it looks like.
Okay.
I think it's automotive repair, um, if I recall, I I have never used the facility, but I think that's
Okay.
Automotive repair, that's right.
It's automotive repair, and and does he need the B M to do that? Could he do that with a B L?
I believe that would require a special exception.
With the B L would require a special exception, okay. There's a motion on the floor, so I'm not, I'm gonna stay out of the debate. It's a motion on the floor to go to B M. Mr. Herbst, Mr. Perlow, is there any unreadiness?
Uh, yeah, but any thought about, I mean, because I appreciate Kathy's point uh of doing a covenant? You know, so his existing operation has been there a long time, but yes, you give him the the zoning and who knows then, so he's willing to upgrade, if he's willing to say, look, I'll, he wants it to upgrade his his existing business. That's one thing, but once you give it to him, if if there's no other covenant, I mean, it is completely surrounded, it looks like, by residential.
I like that idea with the covenant where when he when he's not there, then it's over.
That's the question. I could support that, I just want him to be able to stay in business, so I could support that.
Yeah, me too.
Then then um, somebody make that motion. B M with the covenant.
I have to go back to John and Howard.
I I actually, this is an interesting one, Jeff, from a from a staff perspective. And I know you recommend covenants, but for a covenant for a zoning to um be predicated upon ownership. I'm not sure done anything like that.
I think this one, this one is a tough one, uh, the business, the 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 father who ran the engine company out of this, there's a garage that faces Eastern Avenue, and there's a residential structure that faces Kitty Hawk Road. So it's almost two uses on the same site. Um the engine has been there, engine repair has been there for quite a while. I don't see that that's a viable spot for that to continue in the future. I don't know if the operators uh hairs are interested in taking that business forward. Um and it's such a small site, uh, staff was a little bit concerned about trying to get a compromise, and I think that's why we're we focused on the D R five five. As Kathy said, looking forward, how does this parcel fit into the neighborhood going forward?
If we change this, this man would be forced to shut down his business like right now?
No, so so if this was done in the sixties, there's a reality check. Our zoning has changed since the sixties, so we're saying this is a nonpermitted.
I I'll qualify what I said, it's a it's it's, so you have to go through a process to determine what a nonconforming use to it to be legal. I believe yeah, that he started that process, but he never went through it to determine its nonconforming status. That, so I said it was not a legal nonconforming use at this point in time, because he didn't establish the nonconforming. Even though it's existed, it's recognized that it's a nonconforming, so he will continue to be able to use it as long as it exists. Jeff can chime in if I'm missp- misspoken, but I think
But isn't the issue if he wants to put a new lift in or change the doors on the front, he can't do that, he has
You can you can maintain and and sustain your business, you just can't expand or change it.
Okay, well, I'm fine as long as he can
Good, that's good information, that's really
That's where Mr. Herbst's point, if he did want to invest in that, the lending institution will look at the zoning and say if it's a legitimate lose.
We wouldn't And we wouldn't allow him to use, we wouldn't allow him to get a loan on this property.
That's right, and he hasn't gotten um and a nonconforming use decision that he could then show the institution, it's been vetted and approved by the A L J.
So he has an option, he could go through the A L J, get a nonconforming use decision. Which is probably highly likely, given the fact he's been doing the same thing there for fifty years, forty plus years. Um, we have a motion on the table, so we're gonna, we're gonna go forward with the motion unless there's any other comment. Let's deal with it as it is. The motion is to um zone the entire parcel point four two acres to B M. We've had, we've heard the staff's um recommendation and reservation. We understand what's happening with this property. Um, I also think we now understand that nobody's gonna put this guy out of his, out of his um, stop him tomorrow from doing what he's doing. Um, and he has some other options if he'd like to as the as the kids say, if he wants to become street legal. So let's take this to, let's take this to a roll call vote, Mr. Schweitzer, the motion to change this parcel to B M.
Uh, nay.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Hartman? Mr. Halupka?
No.
Halford?
No.
Ms. Burzens?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Uh, Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heino? Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Perlow?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Go back, Ms. Panero? Nope, and Mr. Heino?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Mr. Phillips, I apologize.
Motion.
I was I apologize, I was in mute, I vote nay.
Nay, okay, that motion fails, that motion fails. Is there a alternate motion? Seven zero zero two.
I move to accept staff recommendations.
Second that, Hartman?
Okay, Ms. Wilson? And Mr. Hartman? This is seven zero zero two, accept. Um, Mr. Schweitzer?
I say yay.
Ms. Panero?
Yay.
Hartman?
Aye.
Halupka?
Yes.
Burzens?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Guinness?
Yes.
Heckman?
Yes.
Heino?
No.
Hurst?
No.
Perlow?
No.
Warren?
No.
Motion carries, seven zero zero two. All right, we're gonna move on to seven zero zero three, and that is Mr. Hurst. And that is for five twenty six Riverside Drive. This is petitioner Riverside Drive LLC, apparently D R five point five. The requested zoning is B M B. Staff's final recommendation is to split the slot, B M B four point seven one and D R five point five four point three one.
All right, so the the applicant here is the owner of the Riverside Marina and Bowyard, which is a adjoining property. And from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, there was no opposite, there were no comments in opposition to the uh, request of zoning, and there were only letters of support, is that that accurate? I don't have any opposition in my notes.
In fact, I think the neighbor supports it, it's adjacent to it.
Yes, that is accurate.
What was the reason for the three one acres of D R five five, was that was that just a buffer?
Yeah, we wanted to to continue a buffered area between the Marina and the adjacent residential area. They own those three parcels, including the house um on the uh uh left. Um, so we we figured that um having that extra space for a buffer would be wise.
Is there, is that house um being occupied currently?
I don't know if it's being occupied, I know it's currently owned by the um Marina.
Okay, there's a car in the driveway. Yeah, whenever that satellite photo was taken.
Hey. Sorry, not really. I mean, wouldn't it be good to have just a little buffer, John? Can't you go along with that?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily against that, I just, I wanted to, this issue to be brought up and discussed, I saw.
Why can't we just leave a buffer?
Did the, did the um, did the owner um, the owner's aware of the staff's recommendation, correct?
Well, I I don't know for sure, but he um, he has access to the staffer.
Okay.
Going, going back to the uh, if I'm reading it correctly, going back to the uh comments that were, public comments were submitted, everybody was in favor of 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 this zoning request change.
I I even believe five twenty four was, wasn't he?
What's that?
I thought five twenty four was in favor too, as I read it.
The neighbor, the neighbor at five twenty
I I don't know the, uh, let's see here, uh, my wife and malaria, yeah, we're we're a family. We live next door, we have known, we, yeah, 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 absolutely, I'm reading the comments right now, they they were in favor, yes. Next door neighbors.
I think what it is, is the 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 buffer um zone that planning is recommend, that that property is actually owned by the petitioner here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, wish your pleasure, Mr. Hurst.
So I would move to recommend that the entire property be rezone to B M B.
Okay, request for B M B for the entire property?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Schweitzer? And any unreadiness? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, our parcel B M B. Seven zero zero three, seven zero zero four. This was the question by Mr. Warren. This is one forty nine Back River Neck Road. Petitioner is Thomas Hall. Um, this is another one of our B L A S zones, it is currently, has a small portion B L A S and a slightly larger portion D R five point five existing. The request is for B L A S four point four acres. Staff recommends it to remain the same.
As I understand it, staff can correct me, this is to expand the current boat service yard? And they need the A S for that, is that correct?
Let's see. I'm gonna guess that's probably right. I don't know for sure.
That's how I read it, but um, you know, he's operating there, I I didn't see a ton of people against this unless I missed it in my five thousand pages of reading, so again, I would, I would uh move to allow a businessperson to operate his business, and looks like from the satellite picture, it looks clean, I didn't drive over there, so I can't speak to it, but it, yeah, if there's
There was only one person or one letter or a document in opposition, so I'm not sure that, you know, weighty that was, but uh, that that was it, only one.
And I mean, if there, if there's a little buffer on the backside there that we want to put in, I could support that too, so.
So you're a buffer to the um northeast?
One one or one six one one, I guess is the the
Yep.
So I I don't know, ten feet buffer?
So right now, it looks like there's sort of a tree line in between those two properties.
I I just Just as a, just a point of information, and not that it has any bearing on what we're talking about, but that's no longer, that's no longer a Marina uh supply uh facility anymore, it's now a it's a repair facility, I think it's automotive repair right now, so it's changed uh hands and leadership and so forth. Uh, that just happened within the last several months, but anyway, uh, just to let you know, so.
Okay. Yeah, I I just, I, what I read, they wanted to continue to do service work, so I seen boats, so I assumed that's what it was, so.
Yeah, well, whatever, boats, cars, whatever, it's probably be the same thing, yeah.
Right, so yeah, open to no buffer, I'm open to a buffer, I I Bob, do you have an opinion on a buffer there? Do you want a buffer?
Um, I I I would say a buffer would, is always a good idea. It's one things, it's one of those things that could always be, you know, removed at some point in the future if necessary, but I would go for a buffer. Yep.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to uh rezone it uh to what they requested, except for a ten foot buffer along uh, one six eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
You've heard the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Warren?
And the buffer would be D R?
Five, it should be five five, it's the same thing as the zoning, joining around there.
Maintain existing zoning on the buffer, okay.
Roger that, yep.
Yeah, I if if you need me to say that out, I would like that buffer to be our five point five, sorry for that.
I think Mr. Schweitzer seconded that. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, that's seven zero zero four, seven zero zero five. Seven zero zero five is two twenty one South North Point Road. Our petitioner is Scott Shinsky. It is currently zoned, a little bit of a variety of B L, B R I M, D R sixteen. The requested zoning is to take most of the parcel to B R. The staff recommendation is B L recommendation is BL for most of the property, BL. Mr. Warren, no, excuse me, this is, this is Ms. Burzens.
So, this one, the owner reached out and just going through all the community input with submissions. It looks like a couple of things, this is the site of North Point Inn Restaurant, which I'm sure many of us know. And half of it, like you said, zoned, half is BR, half is DR, I guess, you know, half residential. And ultimately, they were asking for the entirety to be zoned BR as BR is immediately to the west of them. In addition, they did get support from the association, the Eastwood Community Civic Association for the BR zoning. And I feel like this is a no brainer on this one to, you know, give the guy the BR, I don't know why we wouldn't, it's immediately adjacent, I didn't hear any community opposition, I think the one one person wrote in that he doesn't want any more housing in the area, but obviously BR does not give housing, so I would support BR for the North Point Inn.
Okay. Staff?
You received three letters, one from the community organization supportive of the BR request. The other two comments were not in support. So our thinking on this one was that it is between a BRIM area and a DR sixteen area. It is currently zoned BL. They are looking for additional parking on the DR sixteen portion and BL will provide that for them. And per request, the BL would be sufficient. If they're looking for something else that they didn't say, then maybe it would not, but from what I've heard, the BL would, would work for that area and would be not quite as intense as the BM for kind of that residential area to the east.
Well, they're asking for BR, they're not asking for BM.
It looks like there's a pretty big buffer there.
That's the, yes, BR.
I'll second her motion.
Okay, the motion is, are we going to keep the point oh one DR sixteen? I'm not sure if that's just a cleanup thing, or we're gonna move all the entire parcel to.
It looks like they're just doing that as a buffer, additional buffer.
Usually when there's a small amount like that, it's usually a sliver where we're trying to correct the property line and the zone line.
Okay. All right, very good, so we would need that point oh one. So Christina, your motion is for the requested zoning of BR one point two nine and DR sixteen point oh, is that correct?
Well, it's already zoned, the whole, half of it's BL and half of it's, isn't that the current zoning that I'm looking at?
No, you, what you're asking, what you're asking for is the requested zoning, which is BR one point two nine and DR sixteen point oh one, right?
No, the entire property would be BR.
Yeah, that, that is, there's just, there's like a buffer there, you want that.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah, no, the entire property would be BR, I don't see where the DR sixteen is.
The DR, the staff is wanting, it's just a little sliver that goes along the road.
It's a correction.
Oh, okay, so why wouldn't, why would we have any DR sixteen, I mean, it's fine, it's, it's fine, I mean, it's kind of irrelevant, the DR is so tiny.
Yes, correct. I think the staff is using that to correct a border.
Yeah, that's, yeah, just leave it.
Okay, so the, so the motion is BR one point two nine, DR point oh one. Moved by Ms. Burzens. Second by Mr. Warren. All right, they would say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, have the same, right? Motion carries. Seven zero zero five. All right. Who's making so much noise? Might want to go on mute for a second till we get to the voting discussion.
All right, just putting lights on so you can see.
Okay, seven zero zero eight is, what is, so seven zero zero eight, eighty-six twenty-five Philadelphia Road, eighty-six twenty-five Philadelphia Road LLC is the petitioner. Existing zoning is Mick, BL, DR five point five and RO. Request is for BLAS three point four eight acres and the staff recommendation is BLAS three point four eight acres. Number, this is seven zero zero eight, Mr. Pearlau.
I wanted to be able to vote on one, so, and staff gave me the second one, so I make a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pearlau. All right, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hafford beat you to it. Okay, any discussion?
According to my notes, there are several neighbors opposed, also Rosedale Community Association. And I have a note here that they're currently not abiding by the BL zoning now. I'm not quite sure exactly what that means, but apparently, I guess there's some code enforcement violations perhaps. So, I don't know, it doesn't sound to me like situation would improve by changing the zoning there.
Okay, I see, I see the map, but can't see the issue. Location of the issue.
Hold on one second, we're gonna switch up. Jen, do you want me to switch, or you wanna just wait?
Hang on, Jeff, Jen, Jen is having technical issues, she's gonna have to restart.
Okay.
I think I got kicked out of the GIS database.
I know what happens.
Let me see. Yeah, mine's dead too.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
You might be doing maintenance.
Um, can you use the webpage?
Great timing.
That wasn't supposed to start till one thirty, Jen, I saw, I saw Rob today, you know, or yesterday, and he said it wouldn't go start till one thirty in the morning, so.
Not good.
And we have a problem. And by the way, since we have this same time, Amy, happy twentieth anniversary, sweet girl. Spending it, working all day and all night.
Thank you.
Nice to know.
Twentieth anniversary?
Yeah.
Is that twentieth birthday?
Oh, no.
What do you want, Scott?
Such a sweet talker, Scott.
Jen, can the interim, can we use the webpage? Oh, there you go.
There we go.
Bingo.
No.
Is that, is that issue? No.
Three.
Let's do it, okay.
He's getting it there.
All right.
Here we go.
There's already taken one.
Yep, we're close.
That's seven zero zero five.
We're back.
Seven zero zero eight, okay. So that's right along Philadelphia Road, but it's in the middle of, okay.
So that's right next to that northeast corner is the arm ramp to the Beltway.
Wow, okay. And what's on there today?
From what I can tell, there's, there's a psychic reading in one of the houses. And I think the rest are just individual homes.
Yeah, it's, there are a few small, uh, things in that area.
If I'm looking at it correctly, there's a, I think the larger building up in the upper corner, there was a, is that a VFW or am I misoriented?
No, I think that's the FedEx.
Larger building up there? I, okay.
That's what the Google says, it's the FedEx shipment center.
Oh, okay, well, I thought that there was a VFW up there somewhere, maybe I've got, I may be misoriented here in what I'm looking at.
You know where Lander's appliances?
And, well, no, I haven't used them. I don't know, now, let's see, I know Philadelphia Road, see Gold Ring Road here, let's see. Oh, wait a minute, oh, wait a minute, I'm misoriented, I'm thinking Sturmer's Run Road and, and, okay. So I have to, yeah, I gotta back up here on, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that one, let's see. See, Gold Ring Road, Philadelphia Road, are we looking, if you go up, is that south on Philadelphia Road? Or is that north?
That's everywhere.
That's north on going up, okay.
And you would, you're crossing six ninety-five right there.
It is, it is right at.
Six ninety-five.
All right, okay.
All right.
All right, I'll stay out of this one.
So Mr. Pearlau?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion to, your, your motion is to accept staff's recommendation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any, any other unreadiness, not? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on seven zero zero nine.
Okay.
And that is Ms. Schweitzer.
Okay. Ah. The, wait a minute, let me bring it up here, let's see, whoops, oh, Google.
Seven zero zero nine is sixteen thirty Turkey Point Road. It's the Rockaway Beach Improvement Association. The zoning is DR three point five, the requested zoning is DR two. Staff recommendation is to keep it as it is.
The, um, while we're, while we're, I guess we're all looking at the same screen, so waiting for the maps to come up and so forth. My comments for seven zeros over nine and ten and eleven and twelve, and as we, we, I've been said this back in our work sessions or review sessions before this, and I'll kind of go back and, and repeat some of that. All these, seven oh nine, seven double oh nine is along Turkey Point Road. Seven oh nine is, is along Turkey Point Road, the Turkey Point Road is, this is a, leads to a peninsula. It's a single road in and a single road out, so that's point number one, and I know it's not unique in areas around the bay, I realize that. But in, in these, in these areas, we have endeavored, and I know that the Improvement Association is backed by both the the Cape May Organization and also the Back River Organization. The idea here is to, is to limit density to, in, to reduce the possibility of overstressing our infrastructure. And when I say infrastructure, I'm talking about obviously the roads, I'm talking about the highs, the high schools, the middle schools, the elementary schools, I'm talking about the sewer system, I'm talking about the water system, the, the first responders, you name it, and, you know, I don't have to draw you a picture, you're all familiar with what I'm talking about. Anyway, it's not to reduce, it's not to eliminate expansion or, or development of residences, it's to reduce the density. Seven oh nine is one of those where I think that it deserves some attention in terms of, even though the densities in the, I think in the local areas, there have been three point five for so long, fine and dandy, but you know, is, is, is there not a reason to say, let's limit the density? And if there's a, if there's a development plan, somebody's already invested in at this point, I understand. And I would, I would kind of pull back on that, but at this point, if it's a, if it's a situation where the land is sitting there and it's not a development plan, or somebody's not invested a lot of money and into building homes or whatever, then I'd say, why not consider reducing the density to take the stress off of the county resources? And I'll, I'll rest on that issue.
Make a motion to move that forward?
I would make a motion to leave it where it is at three point five, I understand Bob's interest, but you're taking a lot of value away from people that have owned this land for a long time.
I know, Howard, but that's why if, just, he brought it up if he wants to call that.
Well, you know, and I'm, I'm not gonna fall on my sword on this one, and it's, you know, it's, again, it's not a situation where the difference between two point oh and three point five is so, so major, it's, it's not like we're saying it's DR sixteen and we want to take it to two oh, I realize that.
It's an additional, it's an additional thirty lots for the, all the owners, you're talking about four different owners.
Well, we're, well, we're, well, we're talking about what, six, about point six percent or sixty-some percent of, of a three point five density versus the two oh or something like that.
Going from like sixty to ninety lots, so I say it's about thirty more lots.
What, yeah, yeah, it is particularly for this tract of land, I, I understand that, but I, you know, it's, it's an effort to try to limit the density, and I'm just saying that, that, and I hear where you're coming from, the point is, is that you know, we, we can't, we, we can't ignore the, the stresses that it puts on our infrastructure, and that's all I'm saying, that's all.
Can I make a motion to go with staff's recommendations to keep it what it is?
I made that motion, but you can second it.
I'll second it.
Do I have a chairman?
Where, where is he?
I lost the chairman.
Oh, my God.
You know what, I'm sorry, guys, I was on mute, I was on mute that time.
I resigned for the evening.
I muted myself. We, so there's a motion to accept staff's recommendation from Mr. Pearlau with a second from Ms. Hafford, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Call, Mr. Schweitzer?
Nay.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Nay.
Mr. Halupka?
No.
Ms. Hafford?
Yes.
Ms. Burzens? Ms. Burzens? Come back, Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinold? Mr. Heinold? Mr. Hurst?
I was muted there, no.
Can't unmute me.
Mr. Heinold is a no? Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlau?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Oh, I'm on, uh, Burzens is a yes. Hear me?
Yes, Ms. Burzens is a yes. The motion to accept the staff's recommendation passes. The motion to accept the staff's recommendation passes. We are going to move to 7010. 7010 is, uh, 1725 Turkey Point Road. Um, Rockaway Beach Improvement Association as well. It is to downzone from 3R, DR 3.5 to DR 2. That is the request. Staff will make recommendation is to leave it as it is. That, this issue was raised by Mr. Schweitzer as well.
Let me, let me play back my recording.
Yeah, just.
So I, uh, again, this is, uh, this, it's, uh, very close to where I, where I live and, uh, and I would say, and I would, I, I offer the same reasons, same reasoning to, to offer, uh, the, the three, the change from 3.5 to 2.0. Uh, I don't know if in fact that there's a development plan. That used to be an old horse farm. Uh, years and years ago, I remember when it was totally, uh, low and it's all grown up now, but that, I, I don't know if there's a development plan for it. I don't see any lines on it. So it's, it's one of those things where I've always thought it would be a great place to put a lot of, a lot of nice homes. So given that, I would say, and you can see the high school is, is just right down the street, and there's some very nice homes to the, uh, to the east and so forth, and there's a couple of homes on the other side. Again, uh, this is one of those things where uh, do we want to, do we want to stress? Again, it's a peninsula. That road is one way in and one way out. Do we want to stress our infrastructure? Not denying building, not denying development, not denying homes, affordable homes in fact, because none of the homes down here are going to be extremely expensive anyway. But the point is, is that why, uh, what, uh, the, the difference between 3.5 and 2.0 is not that big. And for, for a person to buy this in the future and develop it and put, uh, homes, uh, in there at that rate would be a, would be a very, would be a plus for the community. But, uh, a- anything of a, of a higher density would be a stress on, again, the infrastructure. So I've got to rest my case on that.
Well, I'll make the motion again to accept staff's recommendation, but I'd like to explain my thoughts to Bob if I can. To, to be able to build affordable workforce housing, you need 3.5 because the two, the cost of the lot would be just too high to be able to build that $400,000 home. Um, I agree that infrastructure is, is, you know, is difficult. We all need to. Um, I can speak to the high school and what, you know, what the seats are, but I think you can improve roads if you have to. You know, over the years, and I've sat on the planning board, I've heard the complaints from the east side that they're the stepchild sometimes of the county. Well, you know what? The growth area um, is in White Marsh, Franklin Square, you know, along, um, this part of our county. I don't want to say along the water. I understand the concerns we have with the bay, all of us. But this is where there is some growth area available. There isn't much left anywhere else. So again, to have housing here, um, I think you need to say to the county, build us a new school. Expand our road a little bit. They can take, you know, a little bit and widen the, the main road in somehow, you know, 12 feet, 18 feet. They have right of ways that they own. I just think that we're trying to lower the density, um, in an area that we need to have some growth. When you look at Trade Point down there and the jobs that Trade Point's bringing, when you look at all the other things that are being done in the area, um, you need to have, you know, some growth, and this is where our county, I understand it's on, you know, your district, but, you know, the rest of us have had it. When I look at, um, Spire's Point, you know, Country Club, they need to survive and they're going to build some density there. I think that developers should pay to widen roads, to bring in bigger sores, to do the infrastructure that's necessary. They do that, you know, all the time along state highways where they require them to widen, pay for the, the improvements. So if somebody wants to develop this at 3.5, that's fine, but, you know, the county should require them to do those infrastructure improvements at their cost. Um, at the higher density, they might be able to afford that. Um, you know, that's my feeling. I mean, I know Walnut Grove or something that Bob Ward built down this way years ago is just continues to be a nice development as I've driven through it over the, the last few years. Um, he built it 10, 15 years ago, but the 3.5 is the single family. You know, I'm not suggesting that you want townhouses at 10.5. I think that'll cause an uproar, but I think 3.5 is a nice, um, lot for a, a nice single family home in the community.
Well, respectfully, Howard, I hear your, I hear your comments and, 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 uh, and I, you know, I certainly, I can't disagree with a lot of the thought and so forth, but I, I would certainly, um, I know many, many, many of our, of our, uh, of our folks in the, uh, Improvement Association, of which I'm a member, have voiced, uh, opposition and I, and I, and I am, uh, I, I can be, uh, I could go in either direction on this because it's not going to affect me necessarily, necessarily directly, but I can tell you that I, I certainly would go with 2.0. So I, I respect your comments and, uh, uh, but I would, but I would, but I would certainly try to offer the 2.0. So.
2.0, I respect yours as well, but the 2.0 gives you half acre lots. It's a lot more drastic than I got to tell you.
Well, that's true.
It looks like a lot of wooded area, Howard. We just keep a whole bunch of wooded area and just a little lane back to a, a nice, uh, uh, parcel. All right, gentlemen, there's a.
You know, you know, that piece of ground right there, I can tell you, I've walked by it a gazillion times because I pick up trash along Turkey Point Road. It's one of the things I do. And, uh, that, and that, that piece of ground right there, I said, was a horse farm. You talk about fertile ground. You wanted to plant that with, with something, it would grow beyond your imagination.
Wayne will, Wayne will come down and plant it.
There you go.
There you go.
Get up with me, Wayne.
All right, guys. There was, there's no second for this motion. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll make the second, but can I say something real quick? I, I keep a boat down Turkey Point, and I have, Bob, Bob's right, it is a, a narrow road, but there are some townhomes off Turkey Point. Um, you know, going down to, to the beach area there. I wouldn't, I don't think it's. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for 5.5 nor for 10, 10, but I think, I think 3.5 is a reasonable, that, that's an affordable house. What we call workforce housing, again, 375 to 450, uh, purchases, trying to get up to a 750, $750,000 house. It just, it's not.
I'm not going to fall on my sword, but I, oh, but I, and, but I'll, I'll vote against that, but I, but I'm not going to fall on my sword about it.
So we've got a motion to accept staff's recommendation. We'll take this to a vote. Mr. Schweitzer?
I say nay on the, on the move, motion.
Okay. Ms. Panero? Mr. Hartman?
Nay.
Mr. Halupka?
No.
Ms. Halford?
Yes.
Ms. Burzens?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
No.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlau?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Go back. I did me here from Ms. Panero. Ms. Panero? All right, I will, this count vote is 66. I will vote with staff's recommendation. Uh, motion carries. And I will mark Ms. Panero as absent. All right. Very good. 7010. Going to 7011.
I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation, and I will talk anymore.
Um, before we get to the motion, motion out of order, chair is not recognized, the motion, I'm going to allow Mr. Schweitzer to, um, state his position.
Thank, thank you. I, I appreciate that. Uh, this one is a whole lot closer to me. You see that trapezoidal area in the center of it? My house. So, and my parents owned all that land once upon a time, and I, I don't feel I'm in conflict in saying that. So I'm very familiar with the whole piece of ground. Um, it was sold back in, uh, back in, uh, 2000s and so forth. Uh, there was a lot of, uh, there's a lot of going on there. But anyway, uh, so I'm very familiar with this. Now, I, I would offer the same argument for, for the rezoning of this. Um, and, and I would say that, uh, the, the, uh, the Corps of Engineers, uh, years ago, back in the late 90, 1990s and, uh, or before the 2000 era, told us that there were a lot of wetlands there and you couldn't build, you couldn't build any houses. So that's why those lots are where they are. The development plan that, that is approved by the county, by the way, approved by the county, obviously. Um, those lots are about half acre lots along Sioux Creek, along Sioux Avenue. The ones along the front are a little bit larger. They're closer to three quarters or whatever acre. The point here is that what, what makes sense here in terms of 2.0 is that those lots by development are, they conform to 2.0 versus 3.5. Now, I'm saying, is that the basis why we should change the zoning? Necessarily, but the point is, is that when the owner bought it, that development plan was already in place, and I know that for a fact. So, uh, changing these lot, changing this zoning to 2.0 may, yeah, maybe special. It, it may be, uh, it may be a different than making it to 3.5, but I can tell you, if you drive along Sioux Creek Drive, which is the development to the lower left, I guarantee you, those houses are real close together. And that's 3.5. They're real close together. The road is ma, as a matter of fact, talk about roads. If you had, you have, you have cars parked along the road, you can't pass another car along the road. It becomes a single lane road. And that's not probably different than too many other places in the county, but the point is, is that you really want it that way? Um, and, and I believe the developer back, way back when, probably had a, a notion about saying, well, we can put this many houses in here, we can, we can reduce the number of off, off, uh, off, off-road parking and so forth, and force people to park along the road. Now, you know, it's a quality of life issue there as far as I'm concerned, but that's just what I personally know about it. Those lots are about half acre lots that you see along Sioux Avenue. Uh, it conforms to 2.0. And, uh, and, and along with, uh, the, the idea that nothing else can be, no other lots can be developed in that entire parcel, the green parcel, because of the Corps of Engineers told us years ago, it's wetlands and you got to stay away from the creek, Sioux Creek. So, um, it's, to me, 2.0 makes a lot of sense. It doesn't inhibit any housing development. It doesn't inhibit anybody from building homes. It doesn't, it doesn't do, it doesn't do any of the wrong things. It does a lot of the right things because it, it offers a, uh, it, it offers, uh, housing, but it doesn't put pressure on the infrastructure. So, yeah.
So I, I have a couple of questions. One is for staff. Um, what does this do to the existing zoning that's on the property for these lots? Can they, is it going to interfere with them if we downzone it? And then secondarily, um, it kind of goes to our argument earlier, um, that nothing's been built on them because they can't afford to do, it, it's not affordable to build on them. So, um, they're at, at their current site, it's been that way, you said, for how long?
That's, that, uh, development plan has been in place since about, uh, I don't have, I could probably go through my records, but it's been in place for about.
2011.
2011. Okay, that sounds right.
So, so there's a reason why those haven't been built. It's, they're, the lots are.
Well, the, the person that bought, it was an owner, the, the person that, that currently owns it, um, had, has just failed to develop it. Let's put it that way.
Okay. So.
Okay. Now, just to answer the question, you know, as I said before, Platts, recorded Platts are vested. So regardless of what happens, those lots that are recorded are vested with Baltimore County. I'd also probably mention that the majority of that property is environmentally constrained anyways. It looks like that way.
For years. Yep.
Yeah. So there's not much that can be done, um, from a development standpoint anyways. Joe might may have, have more information on that. But, you know, like I said, the, the recorded lot, lots are vested. So whatever happens, they're, they continue to enjoy their rights.
Well, I don't have a problem with it then.
Bob, what's your recommendation? I recommend that we, uh, that we go with the zoning request change to, to change it from 3.5 to, to 2.0.
Okay, DR 2. There's a second.
Second.
That was Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think you should ask Mr. Schweitzer, did he say he still owns a home there?
Do I, do I still own a home there?
Yes.
I'm speaking from that home.
Okay, then you should reclusive yourself from the vote, sir.
I don't believe I should, sir. I don't know why I should because I'm an interested member of the, uh, of the, of the association, and I have just as much right as any association members.
Took your ethics course, you make that decision, sir.
Well, the ethics course doesn't place any, doesn't, it, it doesn't involve any financial gain or loss, uh, from me. I mean, I'm, I'm, I hear what you're saying.
That's fine. You make your decision. I've just.
And, and Bob, we're, we're allowing you to make that decision. I know your parcel is outside of the issue.
That's correct.
Your parcel is outside of the issue. Um, you made the motion and we're going to move forward.
Fine. I'm just looking at this.
And, and Mr. And, and, and Mr. Pearlau, I think it's a fair comment to make. Um, you know, the, the decision on those, um, individuals, individual decisions. So, um, and Mr. Schweitzer, if you'd like to go any other route, this is your opportunity.
Yeah. I, I made, I've made my statement.
Okay. All right. I'm going to move to, um, 7012. Which is the corner of Turkey Point Road and Beck Avenue. This is also the petitioner, this Rockaway Beach Improvement Association. Um, the current zoning is CB. The requested zoning is DR 3.5. And the staff's recommendation is DR 3.5. Um, primarily, DR 3.5. On 7012. Ms. Schweitzer?
I would, uh, on, on this particular item, I, I would say that the, uh, uh, the, the staff recommendations are, are all aligned with what we'd like to go with.
You want to make a motion?
I, I move that the staff recommendations for 7012 be accepted.
My second.
So that was Mr. Schweitzer and Ms. Halford?
Yes.
Any unreadiness? Favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 7012. Mr. Pearlau, 7015. 7015. 7015 is the intersection of Gettysburg Avenue. 7015. 7015 is the intersection of Gettysburg Avenue and Blank Avenue. No More Rick Associates is the petitioner. This is a fairly large parcel, currently zoned DR1. Requested zoning is DR5.5. Staff's recommendation is to retain DR1.
We've got a very large developable parcel along the water, I understand. So there are going to be the limits that we've all talked about and we're all aware of. I know that this project has been discussed a lot with a lot of different developers for the last 20 years at least that I'm aware of, maybe longer. Him and Richard Associates is a pretty active client. I personally have not done any work for them for about 10 years, so I could vote on it. But I would suggest to you that Fort Howard needs to have something done to it as it's continued to just decay and not be done. I think that the zoning that they requested is a reasonable zoning. I do not believe that DR1 is. The environmental constraints will be dealt with, with the Corps of Engineers and everybody else. And because you've approved DR5.5, doesn't mean that they're going to get 500 units. They might be building apartments, they might be building, they talked about, you know, veterans assisted living. There's been a lot of discussions over the years. I don't know, you know, to get this project approved, I believe that they're going to have to come in with a PUD as they've tried in the past, but I do not believe that the DR1 is the proper, you know, use for it based on having a need to bring all the infrastructure that we talked about to this piece of land.
All right. Any comments from staff? 701.
We, yeah, so we received a number of comments on this, 127 letters of opposition to the zoning request to change it. All of the comments that we received were in opposition. We did not receive any in favor of the zoning change. A number of the things that we looked at for this property related to environmental concerns. There's wetlands on the property. EPS was, was concerned about wetlands in the forest buffers on South compliant. State water pollution reduction would be more difficult if it were changed to DR5.5. Parks and Recreation said that they would like any development to have public access, a public access on it to the adjacent Fort Howard. And DPW said that the main interceptor in the area is near capacity and reinforcement of interceptor would be required by the developer. Capacity was all done in, all the three schools there, the elementary, middle, and high school being over capacity. So those factors in addition to the public comments that we received. Keep it the same and hopefully there would be a PUD application that could receive further input from the public.
All right. Howard, you want to make a motion on this one?
I would make a motion to give the requested zoning of DR5.5.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Perlo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Herbst. You've heard Mr. Perlo, you've also heard staff's recommendations. It sounds like this is one where the community has shared their perspective. Unreadiness?
I do believe that the developer is meeting, you know, with the community, with the councilman and the county administration as well.
So I, I agree that this, you know, obviously the DR1 isn't working for any developer. But I'm, I fear that 5.5, I'd be a little too dense. I mean, by the time you do all those environmental setbacks and everything, you're going to have, you know, six, seven, eight story buildings to get the density, the requested density, and that just feels a little too much. I'm wondering if there's some little ground, Howard.
I'm happy to entertain it. I'm happy to entertain any kind of covenant. But I guess, I think that really, knowing where it is, you're going to have to deal with all kinds of approvals. So this is going through, you know, everything, and it's going to ultimately fall on a PUD. I think we need density to pay for the infrastructure, to do what they want. These are deals that we were working on prior to.
Just to add to this, this property for a long time was DR5.5. In 2016, in the CZMP, the council downzoned it. And over the last four years, I think we've seen that that hasn't worked because the property is still vacant. It's in disrepair and it needs to be redeveloped.
Well, I'll offer that there are five pages of comments on this issue. This is one of the most commented issues in, in all of the CZMP. We are very close to developing our 2030 master plan. This is almost 100 acres. And I would, I would be prone to accept staff's recommendations and let this be subject to the 20 great consideration that'll be given during the 2030 master plan.
What do you have to say?
I agree with Kathy 100%. This is, you know, it's not something, because it is, it's 96 acres. There was massive, huge amount of opposition to that zoning change request. Not saying that something doesn't need to be done for the future, but it's, it's a large piece of property with a lot of, well, there's a lot of history and a lot of, a lot of love for the property. The point is, is that, you know, I want to rush into that, you know, want to miss, just go ahead and change it at this point. So Kathy is absolutely right.
Can I ask?
What if we did 3.5 so that they have the density they need? You got to be able to pay for the infrastructure.
I would go along with that.
Can I ask who currently owns the property?
Yeah.
Good question.
I mean, it's been through four or five developers in the last 10 years.
20 years.
Who owns it?
Veterans Administration.
That's what I thought.
I didn't think it was ever sold.
Yeah, yeah, it is probably the veterans, Jeff.
Howard, I couldn't go with 5.5, but 3.5, I think, is digestible.
And, and they're going to have to deal with the Veterans Administration, I'm sure, with covenants as well. Because the veterans want, that a lot of veterans are taken care of in this project, where they're going to sell it.
What about the,
Question?
I mean, I don't know.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. So unless Mr. Perlo would like to amend his motion, I think we're going to take this one to a vote and we'll see what happens.
Now, I'll amend my motion.
Which one are you taking to a vote?
Hold on, Mr. Perlo, would you like to amend your motion?
I would amend my motion that the zoning be changed to DR3.5.
All right, Mr. Herbst.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's carry this one to a vote and we'll see what happens.
Before we vote, I would say that, and, and I would be more, more favorably in agreement to, to what Howard just said. However, I'm still going to, because of the massive objection, I'm still going to have to vote no on it. But I understand and there's got to be something done here. So.
Okay, fair enough.
Appreciate that.
Any other comments? If not, Mr. Schweitzer.
I say no. I'm sorry, I'll say no to the motion.
Yep, the motion is to,
Rezone to 3.5?
Rezone to 3.5. Mr. Perlo moved, Mr. Herbst second, Ms. Panero.
I say no to 3.5.
Okay, Mr. Hartman?
No.
Mr. Halopka?
No.
Hafer?
Yes.
Ms. Burzens? Ms. Burzens?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Motion fails. Is there an alternate motion?
I move to accept staff recommendations.
Second, Hartman.
Ms. Wolfson. And Mr. Hartman. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer?
Yay.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. Halopka?
Yes.
Hafer?
No.
Burzens?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
No.
Mr. Herbst?
Nah.
Mr. Perlo?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Motion carries. 7016, which was sequestered by Mr. Schweitzer. Okay. 7016 is for 8241 Philadelphia Road. Right. And it is currently zoned BL and DR5.5. The request is to take the entire parcel to BL.
The smaller, the very small portion of what a staff recommendation was to, let me go back a minute. The, this parcel of ground is, is owned by and is occupied by a family dentistry organization. It's, it's commercial, it's, it's a commercial facility. The lower portion of the green area that you're looking at is really the area in question, and it's a very small piece of ground. What the, what the dentistry office wants to do, because they are experiencing and anticipate, because they are in a residential neighborhood, offering dental services to all the folks around. They, they want to be able to provide expanded parking. They want to be able to provide a, an area where, you know, they, it's not congested in terms of getting in and getting out on the Spring Avenue. They want to be able to, they're, they have found, if they expand their parking lot down to, not all the way down to the end of the, the green block, but they're going to leave some green areas, some green space, which the neighborhood has already said, yeah, we're in favor of. We can walk the dogs and so forth in that area. And I've seen artist renderings of what they would provide there in terms of an expanded parking lot and a green buffer between there and the next house in the, to the south, be the southeast of that green block. So, you know, it makes kind of good sense if we're talking about trying to improve or, or support commercial use of, of a facility that's in a residential area that is, that is thriving and is trying to, trying to thrive. And, you know, to me, it makes, it just makes good sense to go ahead with the, to go ahead with the BL rather than retain that DR5, the 5.5. That, the staff recommendation would preclude them from being able to expand the parking lot all the way down to the end of that lot.
All right. Response from staff?
We, the BL would be appropriate a portion of the DR5.5 portion. So about half of the area between the BL and the, the house to the southeast. And we actually, we have a plan that was sent to us, or not, not exactly a plan, but a rendering of where the parking would be. So I don't know if you'd be able to pull that up or, yeah.
So are you suggesting, are you suggesting that your recommendation is in line with what you received from the petitioner?
No, it's not. It is slightly different. We are not recommending that the whole area turn to BL. We are recommending that a portion, he's requesting turn to BL. So that exact portion, just one minute. Is,
Let me rephrase my question. If I am looking at the rendering you receive, there is an additional buffer.
Yes.
Is that buffer reflective of the end of the BL?
It's not, no.
DR5.5. So, so your area would be larger than that?
The area of the BL that we are recommending is slightly smaller than the area that is proposed in that rendering.
In that rendering, okay.
Bob, make a motion.
I guess, well, you know, I, okay, but I guess in this, in this case, you know, what's the point of, of landlocking a piece of ground like what we're looking at there? That would be the DR5.5. You can't use it for anything. You know, I'm, I'm looking at rationale here. So, you know, my, my, my recommendation or my motion, now, thank you, Todd, my recommendation is to go ahead with the BL 5.53.
I second that recommendation.
Okay. So there is a motion on 7015 with the requested zoning of BL 4.3 acres. And that is 7016. And that motion was made by Mr. Schweitzer and seconded by Mr. Warren. Any further discussion?
I'm just wondering if that DR5.5 isn't intended as a buffer to the residences to the rear of the property, which we've talked about a lot tonight.
Yes, that, Mr. Chairman, that's, again, that's, that's it. That's exactly what the purpose of it was.
That was my, that was my question. That was, that's what I assumed, but I think,
But it doesn't seem like it allows him to do what he wants to do completely. So shrink the buffer down and we can support the buffer, but if he needs that for his parking lot, then.
So, so what he has proposed to the community, he does provide green space. He continues, I'm looking at the map of this, and the green space today, it looks like it's a pretty fair buffer. But he looks like he wants to cut that buffer in half.
Again, Mr. Chairman, that's a rendering, so it's tough to say. I mean, Joe, Joe's eyeballing it and looking at it and says it looks like ours is more than what he's requesting. It's, it's tough, it's not, it's not an engineered or it's a scale, a drawing, so it's, it's tough to say. So, I mean, move forward.
Okay, move forward. We've got a motion and we're going to carry this motion. The, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer?
Yay.
Ms. Panero?
Yay.
Mr. Hartman?
I just want to make it clear that the motion is to make the entire parcel BL, that's what we're voting on.
Motion is to
Correct.
approve the requested zoning of BL 3.3 acres.
No, I prefer a buffer there.
Okay, Mr. Halopka?
Yes.
Ms. Hafer? Ms. Burzen?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No buffer.
Okay, Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Okay. This is a very trusting group. All right.
Deliriant group.
All right. 7017 was sequestered by Mr. Herbst and Mr. Warren. 7017 is at the corner of Riverview Road and Back River Net Road. The petitioner, Salvatore Barantolo. The zoning is RC 20. Requesting zoning is RC 5. Staff's recommendation is to retain RC 1.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is one of those quirky zoning issues where we, we had this come up yesterday where the, the family wanted an additional lot for another family member. It's the same kind of deal here. This is RC 20, and there's a rule in RC 20 that allows for something called an intra-family transfer, but you have to have owned the property since 1987, which is when the RC 20 zone came into effect. And this particular property owner, the petitioner here, just missed that cutoff by three years. They've owned the property since 1990, so... They, since, for that three-year period prior to 87, they can't do an intra-family transfer. Another three years, they would be able to do that transfer and allow a family member to build a, a house there, and there'd be covenants and that sort of thing where they can't let somebody, or, is that... And if they were to get some of such, they would be able to subdivide it and get that other unit. What they want to do essentially is allow their grandkids to build on that property, which is across the street from Back River Net Road. You see that, 7017? What a lot of people do in this area is they have shit of units, and because of the zoning, they're not able to build on it. It seems like a pretty request to make, allow, allow a zoning change to develop at least one or two units on that parcel, and I think they'd be willing to do a covenant.
Yeah, if I could jump in, it's legal by state. The state laws came in after the, so by state, they would allow, be allowed to do this transfer to a family member. Baltimore County law that doesn't allow them to do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Sure.
Finish first?
Yes, the county law is...
Wait, 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 Mr. Hold on a second. Let's let Mr. Warren finish, and then we'll, we'll get the staff's position. We'll have Mr. Warren.
So, so again, you know, we talk about these all the time, and I try to bring common sense to this. I wish there was a way to do it without 5.5, but it, the zoning doesn't let you do that, but allowing a family member to put a house on the same property as his family's property makes all the sense in the world to do that. I wish there was a more common sense way of doing it, but they're just, there isn't in this case. They are going to have a huge challenge because of the, it's area close to the water, but they have to go through those processes to do that, and if they're willing to do that, I, I just think we should give them opportunity to subdivide a piece of this property for a family member. And it has to go on like a 40-acre lot or some crazy thing when they do it, so it's, it's not going to be, you know, a leaky little tiny lot. To do more than one house, it has to be one house on 40 acres, and the other one's 3.5 or something like that. It's, anyways, I'll pass the zoning. I just felt like you have to support people, and this is one where I'd like to support the people.
Okay, all right. Pete, you're going to provide classification on the state versus the county?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yes, the county law for intramural transfers is stricter than the state, so the county restricts it from the date in which the property was purchased, not from the date which, from my understanding, from when the law took effect. So, my understanding is the county's laws for intramural transfers is more restrictive than the state, so that is one thing. The other thing that it is, as I think I mentioned to all you, is RCA, and the state laws RCA resource, you know, conservation area is one per 20. So, you know, that's going to, that's going to override, that designation, from my understanding, will override the zoning, so, I mean, I know the state, I know that the state law says one per 20 for new development, so...
So, you're saying even if we were to change this, they don't have 20 acres on this parcel, right? They've got the 9.8.
Correct. So, the state law would override, the more, the more restrictive law would, would apply, in any case.
So, the changing of this, this zoning necessarily get...
I, yes, that, you know, it won't, yeah, it won't.
Would an RC 5 or an RC 8, for example, allow them to do a transfer to get that one additional unit for a family?
I think it matters with the zoning. It has to do with the designation. It's, it's the fact that the, this county's law for intramural transfers is more restrictive than the state, so I would agree with you on that, so. It's this, it's this county law that, that does that. It's not the zoning.
Right, but if it's a, RC 5, I don't think that applies, is that...
I don't think it matters what the zoning is. It has to do with the, it has to go with the designation in the critical area designation, which is IDA, LDA, and RCA. And this area is RCA. I'm just trying to, with full disclosure, I mean, that's, that's, I want you to understand, so...
Okay. All right.
What would they have to do then to, so they'd have to go to the state and appeal to get that additional?
I, no, I think that what they would have to do is you might look at the county law for intramural transfers, because I think the state is a little more relaxed on intramural transfers, you know?
What do you recommend, Bob?
I would recommend that because of the amount of opposition that was, that was provided, that, that we go with the, with the staff recommendation on this, and I, I understand the family trying to, family members trying to build on their own family ground. They're going to have to find another route, and that may be a, you know, an intermediate zoning hearing or a, or, or some kind of a covenant or something. It, this is, this is one of those real tough ones. I, if you change it to five, if you change it to five... That's the point. They're going to have to do that anyway, so at least, at least get through the first step and then let them deal with the state.
All right, so the chairman entertained a motion. The chairman entertained a motion.
It should, the option is the people that put it up, so, Don, you get the option or I?
I wonder that they probably be resign, um, to... What is it?
RC.
Requested zoning is RC 5.
Sorry. I'll second that.
Mr. Schweitzer is going to second that. Okay. You've heard the motion. Any further unreadiness? On 7017, the motion is to change the zoning to RC 5 for 9.8 acres.
Do I understand correctly, Pete, that if they get the RC 5.5, or RC 5, the point will be moot because they will have to appeal to the state to override the ROA?
Well, the RCA is one per 20 per state code, so that, the RCA designation supersedes the zoning regulations. I think what the, I think what's being proposed is that if it goes to another zoning classification, you could make the argument for changes for intramural transfers, if I understand what, why, why they're going for the change in zoning.
Okay, thank you.
It eliminates one, one issue for them and allows them to go to the state, right? So then they can, they can deal with the state afterwards, but they can't do it now because they've got this other issue. Right.
Okay. All right. You've heard the motion. We'll go to a roll call on this. Mr. Schweitzer?
I vote yay.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
No.
Mr. Halopka?
Yes.
Ms. Hafer?
Yes.
Ms. Burzens?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinold?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst, this is your motion. Mr. Herbst?
Yeah.
Mr. Perlow?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7017. All right, we're going to move to 7018. And 7018 was sequestered by Mr. Warren. 7018 is the corner of Morse Lane and Libs Lane. It's currently zoned DR 3.5. Request is for BMM. Staff's recommendation is for it to remain the same. This is 4309 Shore Drive, LLC.
My thought, again, this was another marina that was just looking to expand some parking. Looks like a large marina. So, that's where my support came in, was, you know, this, like this would fit a marina. Kind of what's at the end of that road anyways.
Well, if I could, could interject, it's not just a marina now. They've built a large sort of bar restaurant on the property as well.
It would look, so...
Well, that, that's an old picture, probably, so...
Yeah. And the restaurant, it was like in the last year or so.
Is that Tiki's, Tiki Lee's?
That is Tiki Lee's.
Tiki Lee's, okay.
Yeah, there were, there were about, I counted 11 opposition, actually more than 11, uh, community members opposing it, and they did not have kind words to say about the bar, so I think expanding the bar might be a mistake, or it is a mistake.
But that's a thriving business in the east side over there.
Yeah, and I don't think they're asking to expand the bar. They're looking for parking for the most part, as I understand, but...
Which would expand the number of people that can fit in there, right? There's houses right there. I, I assume those...
Looks like it's a pretty big buffer, that.
I'm not sure where the bar is in the existing BMM zone. We don't have an accurate photo.
This is, uh, Burzens, I went there once, and it was one time too many, and I left there thinking, these poor people that live around this, I mean, there was police called, fights, there was so many wrong things going on with this place, unlike Sunset Cove, that I think is run much better, candidly. I was candidly horrified, and I, if I were living right here, I can see why there's so much opposition. I, I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty frightening, to be honest.
Do they, do they need the BMM to expand the parking down the lots towards the main road?
They would need a change in the zoning. BMM would work, and, you know, a classification could work as well, but that's not what they requested. There are a lot of environmental constraints for this, and the agency comments were not in favor of it. We, we received comments from EPS about the, the wetlands in the area, and a number of the community members were against it, for the reasons already stated.
And, and I hear, you know, Tina's comments that they're not great operators, but I guess, you know, you don't want them parking on the Wise Avenue or the other street, so do you give them a, you know, some kind of zoning with a covenant that only be used, the increase for that, and not allowing them to increase the size of their facility? Parking is an issue that looks like a pretty empty area that could be used for some parking, if that's what their real issue, you know, really is. What do you think, Bob?
I'm just looking at the, at the number about the, the bar chart or the histogram on the number of comments, and the 717, that's the one we're talking about, was the largest, the second largest one of, of opposition to the requested zoning, so I would say no, I would say no on this one.
We're on 718 now.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to, 718, okay.
I guess we don't get a field trip here, huh?
I have never been there. I don't know what the place is all about, so, but I take, I would take Tina's, uh, comments to, to hard on that, so I'd probably stay away from there. I'm not, um... I really don't, I really don't have a feel on this, but it's, but, but if it's a, if it's, if it's an operator, if it's an operator issue about how it's run and so forth, and there's, and there's, and there's opposition to it, I would say no on it. I would keep the 3.5. I can make a motion that, in fact...
Go ahead and do it. I don't have, I don't, I'm not following the cross. I was trying to help with this.
I, I move that the, that the staff recommendation be, be filled on this one, that we follow staff recommendations to keep it at DR 3.5.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second. Hartman?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Is there an opposition?
So, just, I need, I guess I need clarification here. We are voting to accept the planning board's recommendation, the motion was to accept the planning board's recommendation to retain 3.5.
That is correct.
That's correct, and, and everybody's in favor of accepting that. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not following. I, I guess I'm hearing that everyone said aye there.
Yes, that's what the chairman heard.
Okay, I, I'll, then I'll, I'll stick with that. Thank you.
Okay, all right. That was 7018. We're at 7019.
Getting near the end.
And Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren, would you like to go first on this one? This is the parcel at 3930 North Point Boulevard. It is, the petitioner is North Point Rental Properties. It is currently zoned MLIM. The requested zoning is BRAS. The staff is recommending that the zoning remain the same at MLIM.
Trying to remember why I wanted this poll. I'm trying to find my notes. Herb, can you go first and I'll, and I'll...
I'll start, and you can add to it. From what I understand, this, this is a property that has been used as a car lot for many, many years, and I, I, I think what they want to, they want to have zoning for a used car dealership, and the BRAS, it's not, it's not just for a gas station, remember that. It'll allow, allow for a car dealership as well, which is what they want here, and be able to redevelop the site for commercial use, but it makes sense to me. I, MLIM is really industrial, which doesn't really fit here. Again, they want to be able to use it for, for commercial purposes. It's, it's in a commercial car, it's right near Trade Point Atlantic. Seems to me to be a site that where redevelopment should be incentivized. I don't, I guess, I'd like to hear from planning staff why they were opposed to the, the BRAS, and also whether BM might, might be any better.
the BRAS, um, and also whether BM might, might be any better, think that would work too.
So for this one, we supported retaining the existing zoning of MLIM. It's in an area of, I am currently, that's what the surrounding area is primarily. In addition to that, uh, economic and workforce development would like to retain where they, where they can in the county. So this was an opportunity to meet those requests. Um, you know, it is close to Trade Point, um, so, you know.
If I could jump in here.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah. I, I don't know if an AS makes a ton of sense here. Uh, BR probably makes sense, uh, for what they're trying to do with the car ship and that. Uh, as certain, if, if that'll work. I'm okay with AS because it's on a major, major road. So I don't, I don't have a strong opinion to not have a BAS, but I could be, you know, BR would work for me also.
And yes, overlay allow for like repairs and things on the premises, not just the dealership, but also being able to take in the cars and do oil changes and maybe work on engines and things where VR does not, I guess, in clarification.
I understand, uh, that the owner would be willing to accept BR.
I'll make the motion to rezone the property to BR.
Okay, seven zero one nine. Motion is to zoom the property to BR. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, you've heard the motion. Unreadiness. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So the recommendation for seven zero one nine is to change the zoning on the parcel to BR. We're working our way down, folks, to the last two items of the evening. Our next item is seven zero two zero, which was sequestered by Mr. Warren and Ms. Burzens. And seven zero two zero is nineteen nineteen Willow Spring Road. The petitioner is Montebello Brands Inc. It's currently zoned DR one. The request is ML. This is a fairly large parcel, twenty two point nine four acres. From DR one to ML. That's recommendation is to it as it is. All right, Mr., um, I'm gonna go with ladies first, Ms. Burzens.
Fine, I'm fine with that.
Um, so this one is, uh, Montebello. So it used to be zoned ML and then it was downzoned without the owner's involvement or approval back in two thousand and four. I think the reason it was downzoned was because it was rumored for some high density residential. And they just want, they manufacture liquor here. And they just wanna make sure that their use is conforming and candidly get their zoning back that they had prior to it being downzoned, you know, without their approval or knowledge at the time. So I think this one makes sense. Would I, when they reached out, I understand they, you know, have a concern with the residential around it. Um, and the owner said that they would work with the community and, you know, just give them a list of the uses and, and ML and just have the community cross off, you know, what they don't want. Um, so they would do a covenant in that regard, but they just want to get back to the zone that they already had for the use that they've been doing there for an extremely long time.
I think they've been there over a hundred years.
Yeah, thi- this is in the heart of Dundalk. This is, this is what Dundalk was. I mean, it was, you know, people built work for housing around places where people worked. I mean, this, this is exactly what should, you know, why, why, why it got taken away. I don't know, they're, they're, it's a great Maryland company. Why we would take it away, I have no idea, so.
The co- comments from the old Dundalk Community Association are, they say they're fine with the existing use. Uh, they were concerned that the property apparently was put up for sale uh, some time ago and now not, but they're worried that that might happen again. And so they're worried about the other uses that can be, uh, done in ML, uh, if this property were to be redeveloped. So I think with the, that works with the community to cross off those, uh, uses that are not compatible, I think would work, uh, with, with ML.
Go with the covenant, ML and a covenant?
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to rezone this property to ML, um, coupled with a covenant, um, that's placed on the property along with the adjacent community associations to limit the uses that are the high density uses that the community is opposed to.
My second.
Can I ask a question about covenant? I mean, this is my community.
Go right ahead.
No, I mean, we have a number of community associations that are, are having, are struggling. They're, they're not maintaining. So if they went into a covenant and the community association dies, what happens to the covenant?
The covenant, covenants are one of the, at least, you know, in all, you know, litigation and court cases, covenants run for the land in perpetuity unless otherwise stated. And covenants, time, time over again, through litigation and civil court cases, judges have ruled that covenants, you know, withstand, um, and once they prohibit uses, they run with the land. So I think covenants are one of the strongest thing you can place on land records.
But who has to enforce it?
It can then be anybody in the future. You'd think you'd ask the title guy that.
I was asking anybody that.
I know. It's very, it's very tough to break it. People will find that covenant in their title chain. They're not going to, you know, buck it because there's been substantial case law that allows any of the surviving, um, homeowners in the area that were members of that association to enforce it.
Bob, what do you recommend?
I don't have any feel on this.
We gotta, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so it was a motion by Ms. Burzens. Unreadiness at this point. Second by Ms. Hart.
I would think you'd want the zone to match the business. I mean, that's what the county likes to have. You know, this isn't a DR one zone. This is a manufacturing zone. That's what it should be.
I just want to make sure, is I'm clear. Um, the covenant with the surrounding or with the adjacent community association.
Correct.
To say what?
To, to work with the adjacent communities and talk to them about the uses within the ML that are strongly opposed, the high density uses that are,
Well, to.
I'm sure they're concerned about.
I, I think the, you know, as, as you said, it's been a, a place where they have, um, stored and aged whiskey for ever, as far as I can tell. Uh, and no one opposes those uses. They're relatively benign. I, I will point out that there's no main road. It, there's only one road in and it is a small road and actually has like speed humps and stuff. So as long as you use the rail lines which run along that northern edge, it's not a big deal, but any trucks or anything would have a hard time. I will say, I mean, I understand the need and I know that the community association supported the use of a covenant. I suspect they're, they're gonna want to be though pretty restrictive as to what they'll allow in the future. And you're right. I mean, it was downzoned and then it became more of an issue because the property was up for sale, I believe, just last year.
Right, and, and they wouldn't be able to do, once it transfers hands unless they were doing exactly what they're doing today. Because at that point, existing facility, would be a permitted nonconforming use. Right, because it preexisted the change in the zoning.
Why we, what, why don't we just allow the county council person and the community to work out the covenants and we just?
We're gonna make a recommendation, but, but we're making, this is our recommendation. So the recommendation is to change the zoning to ML with, with, uh, and for the owners to enter into a covenant with the adjacent community association to restrict.
Future uses.
Say it again?
Future uses.
Future uses, okay. I'll just say that. All right, that's gonna be our recommendation. That's, that's the motion. Carry this one. We'll, we'll do a roll call. We got one left. Mr. Schweitzer.
Do we have a second on that?
Ms. Halford's second that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a, I'm yes for that.
Ms. Panero.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Hartman.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
I'm gonna refuse myself. I'm actually a neighbor or close, uh, close enough.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Halford.
Yes.
Burzens. Ms. Burzens.
Oh my lord.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Heckman.
Yes.
Heino. Hurst. Pearlau.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Carries. Our final item of the evening.
And the cycle.
And this cycle, or sequestered items. I'll, I'll, I'll comment after we're done with this one, but the final, um, uh, sequestered item in this cycle is seven zero two six. Seven zero two six and it's appropriate, this is yours, Mr. Warren. This was a planning board petitioner. Not through a hole. Um, the location is along Main Street from the corner of Henry Street to Ash Street. Current zoning is BLAS primarily. The requested zoning is BL. Final staff recommendations is, recommendation is BL. Um, okay, so Mr. Warren, you pulled this.
Yeah, I just didn't understand why we took the AS away from the site. That was my question.
I was the one who put this in. Um, it, it's an area, you've got the Broning Highway, so the access road off of, uh, the Key, Key Bridge. Sort of block, and then there's a, a large, um, concrete buffers. Um, Main Street in Turner Station is just, that is all pretty much single family homes, a church. Uh, it's never served as an AS. The Turner Station revitalization or.
I, I'm good, I'm good then. Just go with staff's recommendation.
All right, is that your motion, Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Warren's motion is to accept, accept staff's recommendation. Is there a second? Everybody's rushing on that one. I don't know who I heard first. I'll take Mr. Schweitzer. All right, seven zero two six, recommend to accept staff uh, recommendation made by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Schweitzer. If we get this, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed have the same right? We go out uniform, unified. Sending a beverage, you know, you know, um, uh, some of our, uh, um, tab establishments are, uh, mixed drinks on the side of the road pickup. So I'll find one and everybody can stop by and get a drink on.
By the Towson Chamber.
We can stop by and pick up drinks. Okay, look, everybody, um, talk to staff about this, so we gotta figure this out. There may be a need for us to do what we've done is to clean up one or two of these. When we get to our final vote, move all of these issues, log issues to the council. So, um, Jeff and Pete, do we need to hold on to tomorrow since that was a published work session? Would you be prepared to update us at that point if there are any, if there's any other cleanup? Or can we release tomorrow as a worked, work session?
I think we can release tomorrow. Uh, we're trying to keep up with your pace. Um, we need a little bit of time to go through everything and make sure these are crossed and, um, that we can map stuff to figure out if there is a problem.
Yeah, I would concur with that because I think we're still trying to figure out last night too. So we're going through some of the issues last night to catch up with them. Um, so, I mean, would it be possible to maybe reschedule something just to, or send stuff out to you?
Yes, you can send stuff out to us and this is, this is what we'll do, because this, once again, we're, we're doing this as a public process. If, um, when we are ready, we will update the website to indicate if there is going to be another meeting that will require us all to come together. Um, we will announce that. We will take care of that piece of business, whatever that is.
Could we set it so that it's gotta be done by like three o'clock or four o'clock? So we can stop checking email to see if we've got to participate?
There won't be, no, no, we're not gonna have a session tomorrow. So, right.
Okay.
We'll have time. Generally, we give the public a week, so we'll have to figure that one.
But the wrap up for tomorrow night is canceled?
Wrap up for tomorrow night is canceled. Staff needs more time than, than tomorrow. And to get things aligned.
Okay, okay, great.
Is there any, a- any other questions? Well, I want to say this. Thank you all very, very much. You know, this is a lot of work. We've approached it well, I believe, and handled it well. It's great to see all the board members out there. Some folks don't want to be seen tonight, but it's okay. But thank you.
For calling me out, Scott.
When the hair salon is back up, you'll see my beautiful face.
I am, I am living with four women. I, I can understand.
May I want you to know that I was texting the governor of the state of Maryland and I said the most important thing that he should open first is the women's hair salon.
Hallelujah.
Quite frankly, quite frankly, Howard, I could use my barber right now too.
I cut my own hair and as you can see, it didn't work out real well, so.
I don't know if that's, uh, self-serving or, uh, or very kind.
I have about eleven blondes women in my office and they are beside themselves, so.
That's the nice thing about getting older. Your gray and your blonde works together. Nancy, I'm forty and I'm right there, so it's not, it's not that much different. Well, hugs everybody. Thanks to staff and Amy. Again, happy twentieth anniversary.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to say, Scott, um, Chairman Phillips, thank God we have you because goodness gracious, where in the world would this process be without you? You're so calm and thoughtful and concise and organized and I love you. You are a stud.
Thank you. Look, this is, look, like I said before, um, this is a great group to work with. I appreciate you all because I know you come from a place of, um, being very earnest. Um, and, and you do this because you believe it's the right. Um, and, and, uh, you do this because you believe it's the right thing to do. So that's an easy thing to work with. I appreciate you all. All right?
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We got, thanks. See you all.
Yeah.